Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, August 8th meeting of the Pembroke Board of Selectment. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15 and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. We have several announcements. Arthur?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marion Smith, the town clerk, says that August 19th, 2016, is the last day to register to vote for the September 8th, 2016, which is a Thursday rather than a Tuesday, state primary election. The town clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM that night for the purposes only of registering for the state primary election. If you have any further questions, please feel free to contact the town clerk at (781) 709-1403.
Thank you. Arthur? Bill? Another announcement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Eagle Court of Honor is meeting for Eric Trisby, Boy Scout Group 105, Sunday, August 28th at 3:00 PM at the Herring Run on Barker Street, Pembroke. There will be a reception immediately following. Any information that you need to, call (781) 706-2530 on August 19th.
Thank you, Bill. Dan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a message from the Town Landing Committee. There will be a Town Landing luau. Everyone is invited for this free event. The date is Saturday, August 13th, with Green Day of Sunday, 14th. Time is from 11:00 to 2:00. They will have a special guest, Blossom McClellan, appearing from 12:00 to 2:00, and she will be making balloon animals. And what to expect? Treasure Mountain Day, contact contests, races, Big and Little Island Swim Races, Water Races, Donut Eating Contests, Water and Balloon Toss. Stick around for the finale, the Water Balloon Fight for Ages Above Eight Years Old. Pembroke American Legion will provide a lunch free for everyone. Again, that's August 13th for the Town Landing Luau.
Thank you, Dan. I have an announcement from Boy Scout Group 43. They are announcing that Nicholas Morrison has earned the Eagle Scout rank from the Boy Scouts of America, and there will be a celebration and a ceremony on Friday, August 19th, starting at 6:30 PM at the Bryantville Meeting House, 32 School Street, Pembroke. Two Eagle Scout announcements in the same evening. Again, Pembroke really has a monopoly on Eagle Scouts. It's a wonderful thing to see. Thank you. Couple other things I'd just like to bring to the attention of the public concerning a couple of our selectmen, if I can. I hope I don't embarrass them with this. Selectman Walter visited the Bryantville Food Bank, and they have a definite problem there for additional storage space. Bill volunteered his time and his efforts, and he took out some old equipment, and he got it disposed of, gave them the storage space. So, another example of Bill again helping Pembroke. And I'd like to give an add a boy to Selectman Boyle, who wrote an excellent article in our local newspaper about Tiny Brown, who recently passed away. Tiny and his son Peter own and operate an auto glass business, and Tiny was well-known and generously supported many charities and organizations in town, and he will be missed by many. Thank you, Arthur. It's a great honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. We look forward to doing it.
Sure. Very good, Bill.
One would be Sunday, they had the Pembroke Fun Day that was put on by the Pembroke Watershed Association, and their purpose of having this is to bring attention to cleaning the fons and the streams and all that. And it was quite a day, the police fire, state police and all that were all there. It was quite a nice day for the kids. They had a lot of fun with my grandchildren, really enjoyed the day up there. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was that we have a world champion boxing for women that was, took place last week down at Pullup, and now again the Lopez, who was the Secretary Treasurer of the Boys Club, won a world title at Pullup, did the fight down there, and she is now the world lightweight champion of the world. She's a winner. It's a good thing. She donated her time at the Boys Club, which is...
Good. Anyone else have a announcement?
Since the Watershed Association was a big success, Matthew was there as well, and I chased my grandson around for three hours, and that was enough to put me away. But it was well-run, and, you know, for a hot day, they had a great success, I think.
Good. A lot going on.
Yes. So, in addition to all these other great events Pembroke is having, on August 20th, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, there'll be Pembroke Day, run by Pembroke Chamber of Commerce. It's gonna be a great day for fun with the whole family, and that's gonna be at the first, Lieutenant Brian M. Phillips Field.
Excellent. You have a lot going on in town, and I want to thank everyone for making those announcements. First scheduled meeting is with Kathleen Keegan. Kathleen, would you like to come up front, please?
Hello, Pembroke Selectmen and Town Administrator. Thank you for having me here. I'm the chairperson for the Pembroke Slute Service, which is an event that we're gonna be putting on. It's a small group of Pembroke citizens. We just wanna thank folks like you, and the police, and the teachers, and the DPW, the firemen, everyone that serves our town. We just wanna have a wonderful day to support you folks. And it's gonna start off October 15th this year, 2016, and from 12:00 to 3:00 on the town green, we're just gonna have a lot of activities that promote all these folks that serve the town. And then it will culminate at around 7:00 o'clock at night with fireworks. So, we're real excited to have a huge fireworks display, like we did back in 2012 when Pembroke turned 300 years old. So, our group is working ferociously to try to make that happen, and I am here to request a vote to pay for the fireworks. Am I saying that right? I would request the board to vote to execute a contract for the fireworks for October 15th.
Paying for it as well.
Right, yeah, so when you write the check, that makes sure it doesn't bounce.
Does anyone have any questions, Kathleen? I'd just like to say that we have discussed this previously, but we never voted or made a decision. I think we're ready to do that tonight. We have discovered that the Pembroke 300 Fund has an amount of money left in it, and it was donated money, and it was for the residents of Pembroke. So, I believe that, we think that it's appropriate to pay for the fireworks from out of that fund. So, I would... Do the selectmen all have any questions? Is there a motion?
I would motion to take the funds for Pembroke Fund Foundation, pay for the fireworks, and the prices, $15,000. They brought out of the money from the 300, and that money was beside and kept there for other people at Pembroke, for everybody in Pembroke. I think this is a great event to have and do that, and everybody can enjoy that. It's a free event. Everybody can enjoy it, so I appreciate all your time and effort to do this event for people from Pembroke also.
Yeah, we love doing it.
You have a motion by Bill with a second?
I second.
Second by Dan. Any other comments or questions from the board? I'd just like to say for the public that we have discussed this with the town accountant, and we cleared any questions that we had before, and so we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor of Bill's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? I declare it five to zero. Thank you very much, and we'll have Ed go over the contract, as he always does, and he would execute that once we get a legal opinion on it. It's probably not gonna be a problem, but that's the procedure.
All right. Great, and I'll keep you apprised of, as we continue to line everything up for that date.
Very good.
October 15th.
Thank you.
All right. Bye-bye. Thanks again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On a side note to this, and, you know, I echo Bill's sentiment that this money was donated by various people and community organizations for the benefit of the town for fun events, which the 300 was, and this will be too. Just curious what the balance is in the fund after this $15,000.
It's a little in excess of $30,000.
Okay. And I think events like this that come up, it's a worthy expenditure, but, you know, at some point, this board or maybe the committee themselves might want to think ahead and maybe create a program for expending the money. Or we can just keep it, if something comes up, have it in our back pocket. But nothing to think of tonight. I just think the board should consider it at some point.
Good suggestion. And an answer to that, the town accountant and I are looking at preparing an article for the fall town meeting to do that very thing. Okay. Great. Excellent. Thank you, Ed. Our next scheduled appointment is at 8:00 with State Representative Josh Cutler, who'll give us an update. We've got time between now and then, so we'll go down to the board action items, and the first item is for the board to vote a date for the special town meeting, October 18th, 2016.
I would move October 18th, 2016, as the town's special town meeting.
Motion by Arthur and a second by Bill. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Five to zero. The second item under action items is to vote to reopen the special town meeting warrant effective August 15th, and to close the special town meeting warrant August 26th at 4:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
I would move the warrant reopened effective August 15th and to close the special town meeting warrant effective August 26th at 4:00 PM.
Okay. Second motion by Arthur, second by Bill. Any questions from the board?
Question?
Question, Dan?
Ed, do the department heads no understand that tight window, and any of the other folks in town that may have an article do, or typically have an article do as special town meeting?
Well, we will, the department heads do, and I think, I don't know if it was on the website?
It was, and individual departments will have to sign at some point and notify individuals.
All right, great.
It's been filling the calendar for many months.
Great. Yeah, and one of the things that this board needs to always get better with is communication, so I just wanna make sure that everyone knows, especially in such a tight window.
Thank you for that answer, Ed. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That's five to zero. The next item is review and accept the report of an informal meeting with the Division of Aeronautics held on June 24th, 2016. On that date, I attended a meeting with Selectman Walter, Andrew Mahaly, who is the Mass DOT Division of Aeronautics, he's an inspector, Police Chief Richard Wall, and Lieutenant David Kross, and was also attended by Sabrina, who took notes at this meeting. We met at 10:00, and we had put together questions that we asked the people that are our butters, our interested citizens, who had questions when airplanes are used at the private airfield on Barker Street. There was a lot of issues that they raised, that this board did not have the knowledge to answer those questions. So, we contacted Andrew Mahaly, and he came out to the meeting where we had put together all of the questions, and we went over every question, and we got answers from him, and there was one question that he gave us a partial answer, and he suggested that we go to another area in Burlington, the FAA. I spoke with a gentleman there, who was the safety officer. I sent him the question, and he responded in writing, and called me and gave me the answer, and we've included that in this report. We have a lot of questions and a lot of interested people, and we put them all together in a report that you have in front of you, and there's also some definitions in there or terms that I at least am not that familiar with it. I think we have answered every question, and what we would like to do is to ask the board to vote to put this together and forward it out to every person that asked the question, and we would also, of course, include the owner of the private airfield, so that he knows exactly what we did, what the questions were, and what the answers were. So, what I would like to do, if the board agrees, is to keep this in a file, so that in the future, any other question that would come up, or any new board of selectmen, they would have a place to go as a reference. So, do I have any questions from the board?
I'd just like to see it on the website also, probably some interested people that maybe have an interest in that, but didn't ask a question. That would be a necessity for each of us.
That's a good suggestion, Bill. And Sabrina, we can do that, I imagine. Thank you. Are there any other questions? So, I think I would like to have a vote from the board to make this report public in the way that I have stated, so that every person of interest who came before this board, or who didn't but still has interest, would be able to access this information. So, with that, I'll look for a motion.
Well, the public has been most patient, Mrs. Dick, in almost a year to bring to fruition, so I would move that we make this public and that we furnish a coffee to the people who are impacted by the airport.
Motion by Arthur, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question. We're going to publish this, the intent if this motion passes, is to publish this, but how will we specifically notify the members of the public that came before us and place their names before us to be heard? I just wanna make certain that they know explicitly that this information is available.
Yeah, I think when we solicited the questions, one or two of the people who met with us on an evening a while back volunteered to poll all of the neighbors that were interested and that did have questions, and that person put together all of the questions and forwarded those questions to us. So, we have those names separated, correct?
Yes, and we notified all of others, and certified now soliciting questions. All of them, we have to get those groups together and submit them to the board. We have that registered, except that they don't mind.
Fantastic. I just want us to take the lead in this and not be passive and say, well, we published it. We wanna push the information forward.
That's the way to go. It takes a long time for it, I think, to get it, you know, to hold it in hand is the way to go.
Right, and they waited a long time, and not through any lack of effort on this board's part. Lou and Bill, both you folks, and Sabrina, who's well in the background, have been trying to push this meeting along, so even though it seemed like we were spinning our wheels, we were working at it, you folks especially.
I think what you're gonna find in this report is that there's circumstances for each event. So, this question, we got to, how low can an aircraft fly when they're going over homes? Over there, inbound or traffic on the end of the private airfield? It's a very broad question, because there's a lot of different circumstances that have to do with that. It has to do with plane, it has to do with pilot, it has to do with people inside, it has to do with weather. There's so many different circumstances for each individual incident. If somebody felt that they were violating something, should get the tail number of that aircraft, report that to the Mass Aeronautics or the FAA, and have them investigate that. So, just because someone is flying lower than what they believe there should be, they may have authority to do that under regulations. So, if you look up under the Mass General laws and you see, you go to a judge in the courtroom sometime, and you see all these law books that are in back of the judge, it has to do with all the Massachusetts general laws. Then you look at the FAA and the Mass Aeronautics, and you see all of the books and all of the chapters and all of the sections that also have to do with Mass General laws. It's a lot, and sometimes these investigations take longer. When you see the FAA or the Mass Aeronautics involved in any type of investigation, they don't take it lightly, they take it very seriously, and it may take them a long time to come up with an conclusion about something, but they put every effort, plus the willingness to have investigations. So, all I gotta say to the public is that they might not be completely satisfied to report, but it's the best that we could do, but, and it's an investigation that's done by state and federal authorities, not local authorities. So, it's, there's a lot of ultimate regulations to be had to do with that.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, I'd just like to add that when Bill and I tried to bring these, get all of this together and get answers to many questions, we did find out who the responsible people were that we should talk to, and those are the people that we did meet with. There are some issues that might fall under the Town of Pembroke. If signing is gonna be put out front of a person's property that would advertise a particular event, it would be good to talk to the building inspector, who controls our sign laws, and it would be a suggestion from the board, I think, to the owner of the airfield, that if they were gonna have any type of a big event, which they are entitled to do, if they just let the board of selectmen's office know, then we would at least be aware of the event, and so that would be helpful to us. So, we have that cooperation from the owner of the airfield, and I'm sure that he'd be very willing to do that. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Do we have a, to take a vote now on to accept this report and to distribute it as we have described? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? I declare it unanimous. Before I go on, I'd like to recognize the young gentleman at the back. Would you have any business that you wanted to bring to the board's attention?
Yes, I have a question.
Would you like to come up front, please?
Absolutely.
Tell us your name and...
Hello, board and town administrator. I'm Joe Quigg. I'm here asking for advice. On Wednesday, August 17th, I'm gonna be giving a talk in our public library about a career in computer science, and giving a free talk about like the fundamentals of computer science to the public for free, and I'm wondering if you have any advice on how to reach out and inform the public of this talk that I'm gonna be giving.
Well, I think the first thing we could do is put it on the website. Sabrina, would that be a good suggestion?
Okay.
It's at 7:00, Wednesday, August 17th.
Computer science.
And of course, you're getting a plug here tonight, that you'll be conducting that course, and a lot of folks, I think, have some knowledge of computers, but it never seems to be enough knowledge, so hopefully you'll get a good crowd of people there, and I'm sure by answering their questions, you'll be doing them a very big service. So, thank you for coming tonight, and I hope you're very successful there.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Okay, you want to...
Before you go, there are a couple of other places you can look into. Pembroke Mariner and Express is our local newspaper. It's owned by the Patriot Ledger, but that's the local version. You can contact them, find their information on the website. They might like to speak to you on it, I'll do a small article on it. I was looking for local interest stories. And also, there are a couple of local Facebook pages that you can look into. I don't wanna preference one over the other, but there are a handful of them that you can look into to join that for the information. Just good luck.
All right, thanks a lot.
Pembroke News, yeah. Happy to be here.
Oh, yeah. Wednesday, August 17th, 7:00.
Good deal. Jumped on that one, Quigg. Good. That's good.
Well, thanks a lot for your time.
All right. Thank you for coming in, and I hope you're successful.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Special Police Offices, an annual reappointment. This list was submitted by Police Chief Wall, and he is recommending an annual appointment of the following special police officers. Douglas Bailey, Mark Schubert, Brian Kane, Roy Small, Alan Lekes, Frank Margaria, Michael Lorenberger, Edward Flannery, Gregory Burns, Robert Lane, James Falter, Michael McCarthy, Justin Turvey, Willie J. Falter III, Willie J. Falter Jr., Robert Morgan, Joseph McCann, Arthur Short, John Edmondson, Robert Morissette, James Madden, William Hinchey, Richard Tenor. Can I have a motion, please?
I would move the annual appointments of special police officers that's submitted.
Motion by Dan. Second by Dan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have two sons there, and plus myself, so I don't understand.
No, we have four in favor and one abstaining. Thank you, Bill. We have before us a new committee formed to address the town's long-term revenue growth. This was discussed at a previous meeting of the board of selectmen. It was proposed to us by members of the Pembroke School Committee, and they are suggesting that the town establish a committee and to take the issue of raising additional revenue for the Town of Pembroke and coming up with a plan of action. A recommended committee of seven people. Ed Fawn, Town Administrator, Aaron Obe, Superintendent of Schools, Mike Tropiano, School Committee Budget, Patrick Chilcott, School Committee Budget, two selectmen, and two alternates, Mike Buckley and Kathy Salmon. So... Budget, two selectmen, and two alternates, Mike Buckley and Kathy Salmon. So, the list is complete except for two selectmen. And the planning board, and the planning board... Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, that, tonight the planning board has also been invited for one person to represent them, and they will be discussing that tonight at their regular meeting.
Question?
Yes.
Dan. I don't see anyone here from the advisory board, is there a reason for that?
That's a good question.
Don't remember.
Yeah, I think we had it originally, so you're, you're correct. Yeah, we had a couple of discussions about this, and I think that might have been left off.
Yeah, I think we should, that's a glaring oversight.
Yeah. So, if we add an advisory board, that brings us to eight. Eight is, we usually have odd number committees, which helps in a forum. If we have seven, the forum is four, if we have nine, the forum is five. Well, we're probably always gonna have at least Mr. Buckley and his son at almost every meeting, one or the other above, so that'll take care of the forum, one percent. So, as Dan pointed out, we should have an advisory board person on this committee, and we'll be in contact with them and ask the chairman to bring it up and to put forth a name. So, we would have, we would amend that list to add a person from the advisory board. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, if I need a motion?
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Arthur. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, I declare it unanimous. I would like to close that out tonight if I can. Do we have a, and a selectman be interested?
I had a guy volunteer to do so.
Excellent, Matthew.
I'd say he volunteered, but, but, yeah, it's a perfect match.
Yeah, so we'll add Matthew to that list, and we have a second selectman who'd like to volunteer?
Yeah, I'm teaching at Quincy College, September, October, but at least the schedule on Wednesdays I can make it, so. That'd be a good combination.
Good, thank you both. So, we will add Arthur and Kathy to that list. Good, moved by Bill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, that's unanimous. Thank you both. The next item on the agenda, still plenty of time before eight o'clock, we have a resignation of Catherine Fairbide on the Town Landing Committee. Do I have a motion?
I would move to accept with regret, Catherine Fairbide is gonna be a terrific member for a number of years, and she certainly will be this...
Motion by Arthur, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bill, I guess. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, hearing none, five to zero. The next item is to consider a request for appointment on the Town Landing Committee. We have an application from Mark Gallagher, and an email from the chairman of the committee, who is requesting that we appoint Mr. Gallagher.
I would move the appointment of Mark Gallagher to the vacancy on the Town Landing Committee. He is a Bryanville resident, he's not on Little Sandy, but he's in the flock of it, and has expressed a great deal of interest in the beaches, and I think he would bring a lot of energy to the committee.
Excellent, very good. Motion by Arthur, seconded by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, and we look forward to your contributions. The next item of business we have is a request to approve activation of a streetlight on Eleo Park, Monroeb Street. There is no streetlight there now.
There is the...
Oh, that's right, there is, and the developer has been paying for it, correct.
Yeah, so we accept it, it's why we chose to...
Yes, so I need a motion on this item, please. Moved by Arthur. Second by Bill, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, five to zero. Now, we have a very interesting item. The Pembroke High School Latin Club is requesting that they use Tubbs Meadow for a Junior Classical League competition. This competition is that the Latin Club will build a tributé at Tubbs Meadow and enter it into the Junior Classical League competition, and they wanna host this competition at Tubbs Meadow. They have provided a picture of what they wanna build, and not knowing anything about it, I used Google, and I found out that this is, some of you may already know this, but for those that know, this is derived from the ancient sling in China in the fourth century B.C., and it is made to launch projectiles against their enemies. They have various heights, and the various heights lead to the, how far projectiles are thrown, and the accuracy at which they can be thrown. They've been built for many sizes, and I found out that the largest one is fifty-nine feet tall, it's in England, and it can throw an eighty-pound missile up to nine hundred and eighty feet. And I was, didn't know much about this, as you can tell, and I was surprised that this is a very popular thing to be done, it's a, a very teachable project for people.
Well, I say happy D and I favorable action.
Motion by Arthur, is there a second?
I have a few questions to...
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
I was hoping, before we vote on this, to get a better understanding of the scope of this tributé, and as well as, I'm hoping we can put together a public viewing day for this, and then we can form a public event there.
Excellent idea, be interesting to see it.
They had several appointments scheduled for conservation, and they're very early stages, they didn't even wanna go too much further if it wasn't gonna be allowed, but they're gonna be working for months with conservation on a specific location in Tubbs Meadow, and they have a significant set of criteria that will be devoted in terms of security and construction, and what they couldn't put in there, so they definitely didn't plan to come before the board, they gave summer vacation for the high school heads. So, they're just wanting to find out if the board is supporting them proceeding through the process of conservation, and they did schedule Latin Club representatives to come in before the board, if they're so desired.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, but does anyone on the board have any objections to giving them our preliminary okay, knowing that they are gonna be working very closely with conservation?
No, it's a great event. Every fall, there are dozens of these tributés gathered to toss pumpkins and doors, so you keep an eye on it in the fall, and you'll get to see it on the evening news, not just on Google.
Very good, I will, yeah. I don't throw many pumpkins where I live, I guess. I haven't been threw up on that stuff.
It's a, it's a medieval device, and people get into it in varying degrees, from just building the mechanism to getting in character.
Excellent. So, are we in favor of giving them the okay to generally move ahead with this project?
That's a great idea. I'm sure there's a, you know, a funny one down there, but we're coming to it. We have a motion on the floor, and I, I didn't object to it, I, I'm only imagining, so.
No, I think that's where we give them the permission to move forward, see where it takes us on that. Good. Did we have a second on that? I lost, we have a second by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that's five to zero, thank you. The next item of business, Jan Gallagher, Chairman of the Pembroke Art Festival Committee, is requesting the Board of Selectmen to grant permission for the road closure of Curve Street on Saturday, August thirteenth, from one P.M. to five P.M. There will be an antique car show at the First Church. They have procured a police detail on this event at these times, so...
I would second that subject to the approval of the police.
Excellent. Moved by Bill and seconded by Arthur with a caveat, the police chief is involved, and gives us, okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, I declare it unanimous. The next item before us is the minutes of the selectmen's meeting of July eleventh, two thousand sixteen. Do I have a motion?
I would move the minutes of July eleventh, two thousand sixteen, that's today.
Thank you, Arthur, is there a second? Second by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing none, five to zero. Do we have any old business before the board tonight? Hearing none, I'll move along to the Town Administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, upon a request of Selectmen Tribuco sometime, about within the last week or so, I was able to furnish him a copy of the summary report of the strategic planning retreat that was held at the Pebble Country Club, and as a follow-up to that, I've included the report of that strategic planning retreat, as well as the interviews that were conducted by the intern from Suffolk University, and you have that in your packet tonight for your information. So, what the town accountant and I are doing is, I've sent memorandums out to all the department heads about capital improvements, and updated their operational plan to update that five-year plan that was done a few years ago, in, in compliance with what the, the selectmen told the advisory they were gonna do. So, we have that reported, do you have any questions, obviously, in contact?
Speaking of that, I would like to say, also mention to the board that Dan also sent me a newspaper article about town and their plans they have for the upcoming year. Although that was a question that was asked by advisory to this board, and it's a good thing to see how other towns are putting themselves, and what position they're putting themselves in, and what their plans are for the next year. I think the public knows that this board has been trying to get the solar farm on the landfill, and that's gonna be a, an economic plus for the town when we get that, we're still trying to move forward on that. Things do look good, but we haven't got anything that I can mention here tonight. There's other issues that we're also working on, so we, we could come up with a document, I think it would be a good idea, on what our plans are for the future, so we'll be addressing that. Anything else, Dan?
No, thank you.
Does anyone have anything under Asper Selectmen?
I have a verbal Asper Selectmen, if you could.
We had time to write out, it opened, I told them I would bring it here, in the neighborhood of Cedar Oak and Pine Terrace and Woodbine Avenue, we've had an issue with speeding for the last couple of summers. It's gotten out of hand to the point that we had the police involved Saturday night, and I think Officer Ramsey was telling the young gentleman what it's gonna be like for the pedestrian, we was caught speeding again, but the neighbors had suggested, and I, I thought it was a good suggestion at the, at the time, I still think it's a good idea, it's to bring in seasonal speed bumps, you know, the ones that they use in the condo complexes and the cape and that kind of thing, where they put them in, and April and May, and they take them out in October, so they're not lifted by the, you know, snowpaws and that kind of thing. And to a neighbor that I've talked to, not most of them, but a number of them over the last couple of days, and said, what if the town brought in these temporary speed bumps, what would you, you know, what would you think, because, you know, you're gonna have to drive over them as well as being, you know, welcome to that. And they were to an individual in favor of the speed bump, and I'd like it sent from the Board of Selectmen to, where if possible, to the DPW to look into getting, it's a little late for this year, and the police are doing a good job of, of, you know, catching people when we turn in police numbers and things like that, but I, I think it would be a, a good first step in curbing some of the traffic, and we would, you know, as a neighborhood, we would be the guinea pig for it or whatever, and glad that so, but I'm sure there are other neighborhoods around the pond, particularly along Olden Pond and Furnace Pond, that, you know, probably would support that in the neighborhood as well, so, provide, do it, I think. We need to do research and talk to DPW, and, you know, gotta make the neighborhood safe, because the car Saturday night was estimated at thirty-five miles an hour on Cedar Terrace, which is most of, you know, it's about nine feet wide, and you had nowhere to go if there was another car coming in the other direction, which you had if a child came out on the street, or, you know, fall of a basketball out on the street or something like that, so, before we have a tragedy, I'd like to get some support from the DPW, and I think that they would welcome the opportunity to come to the community. I, I can certainly understand the safety issue there from your description, and beauty five doesn't sound like an accessible amount of speed, because we used to ride in the streets, but a nine-foot-wide street, it's just looking for something to happen. So, you, you're, you're still doing some investigations on this, talking to other people, but it's come, you know, with support from everybody I've asked about it, because it's, it's a neighborhood nuisance, and it, you know, it comes as a mixed blessing getting pavements done in, in certain neighborhoods and certain streets, because, you know, in a street that's nine, or ten, or twelve feet wide, you have to move pavement, it becomes a NASCAR, so, I, I think that, you know, getting the DPW involved and the police have been great, and I can't say enough about their response, so, I, I'd like to look into the speed bumps, you know, as a seasonal solution. I, I think it'll work, but, you know, to experiment on three or four streets, you know, you have the neighborhood support to do it, or he's in that.
So, yeah, yeah, I would like...
Dan, so, Ed, I would like, I would like to see the D P W. and the Police Department analyze it first and foremost to see if it's feasible. And, you know, public safety is public safety, and I understand. But one thing I'd like to guard against as a Selectman representing all the town is to, is to be placating one neighborhood that, if they, in thirty-five is absolutely too fast for that roadway. But if it's a neighborhood that perceives someone that's speeding and the board of Selectmen run to the rescue with temporary speed bumps for them, and then every other neighborhood that's a tight community will all feel the same way. At what point does it end? And, you know, I'm not taking away from the safety factor, but I have to step back, I have to step back and look at it in that light. Is this, are we truly stopping, stopping a menace for safety? Or are we placating a tight-knit neighborhood? I don't know. But that's something that I need to look at and think of, that it's, and I know it stopped, I think, there and you lift them on the ground. But I need to look at it a little further. I can't just keep running to help everyone for everything when someone says, think of the children. So I need to look at it. It may be completely valid, and if they're going thirty-five miles an hour, if that's valid down that street. So I just wanna have the experts, the experts in the industry, the D P W., Police Department, take a look at it, President, a political board, along with a political board.
That's why I wanted to involve the D P W. and the Police Department.
Absolutely. No, it's fair, it's fair to do this, certainly.
I mean, and it's an easy and expensive solution.
It's, you know, actually, I don't know how many people I know who read kids.
Yeah.
Good job, I, each, my, I, because they're big now, and they're also, you know, they're some, you know, you get people, you die, you, hey, I, I, it's like they speed everywhere. I had a call with these last night, three months after the death of one of these, dirt bikes, nine o'clock, nine o'clock, late, they must have taken five. It's crazy. I don't know, I don't know what, you can really, it's not now. It was, you, you have to, to get a speed ticket, you know, a hundred miles, it's not that much. The speed was, we talked about these small roads, small back roads, and all these types of roads.
I was actually hoping to speak on that. Potentially ultimate and perhaps slightly less expensive solution to the problem. We have the Police Department looking through the idea of placing unoccupied police cars somewhere along the road and make people perhaps think that there's these officers monitoring the speed limits.
Have you tried that one time? Here, oh, oh, yeah. Couple of, yes, geez. That gives always to the police. People have very quickly, it goes out. Yeah. I don't want to make it worse. If you're gonna put the bad in, you're gonna put it in there. That's my opinion.
I would happily agree. I think speeding in this town, in various sections of town, it's prevalent all over. And people really do watch these people, and it's, you know, just observe. That's all they have to do. So, you know.
One of the funniest things about that is that people on one particular street are calling, complaining about speeders, and they're caught on another street. They're all on the same thing.
It's right. Everybody really does. Especially in the summertime, a little shit.
Well, again, I think it's, you know, it's coming upon us where we are made aware of it, you know, we need to take some type of positive action. And we had the idea of a speed bump came from a neighbor, you know, somebody who's not necessarily involved in the day-to-day, you know, political running of the town, that, you know, and they're acting upon, you know, something from the average citizen, you know, very worthy about time and effort. I would like to forward it through Ed. to the Police Department and to the D P W. And I would appreciate the support of the Board.
Um, I do too. So, um, what other?
Yeah, I would move that edge communication, whatever fashion D C.'s moves fit, to address the issue. He knows what it is, and he would, you know, for, well.
Good. Good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Hearing none? Mr. Corn will take care of that. Thank you. Uh, new business before this Board? Anyone have anything? Bill?
Over the past, we've looked into, I think, the gas, the water, the streams, a lot of waiting. Especially, we had a really huge, apparently came up this year, it's the ponds. Which, if you look now, you see it's, it's here, there's no water. We've had the gates closed. At the ladder, we got the transponds, it's the first, there was no water. There's some water coming in from Olden Pond, Furnace, just, well, now, we can't be, where it should be. When a tragedy, you have this happen this time of year because September, the migration of the two million fish, we go downstream. And looking to have water to do that, hopefully, the water will resemble, if my, there's not an option, you can open the door again, and allow the fish passage through pipes that go through Silver Lake, that means divert it to the stream. So regarding what this is, we do have, that's gonna make the level of work, to come down even more, but now, I'm doing that. And it's something that I think that we should look into, is Brockton, Abington, because they just keep taking water, taking water. You can see the level of Brockton, Abington, nobody is looking at them. I mean, I think they only, we've done a set of, they only have them, and you're diverting water, I mean, in pond, you know, and using that water to send the water to Brockton, Abington. I don't know if they could find out, any kind of meetings that could just, possibly, we could, we could attend some of those meetings and find out if they do organize any of that, all that information like we did with Brockton. I think it's just critical, I think the water is flowing. Last year, we had the same problem. The water level gets down low. It wasn't flowing over the end, but it was coming in from Olden Pond and Furnace, but it wasn't flowing out. So there had to be more of something, and so the problem we found underground, we acted, we ran over to Big Sandy, and they just keep taking the water. So, yes, they're taking the water, that whole area of the water level, it's happening further. So I don't know what kind of restrictions they have, or what they have, like, what they're doing to keep taking the water, or some way we can, we can, kind of, they have committee meetings, and possibly we could go, or I'd be willing to give my time up to go to meetings and explain to them that. The urban population is very important in town, and especially this year, we have such a large group of fish that came up from migraines on here. The biggest is, and it just seems a shame that we would be able to get those fish downstream, back up to the ocean, and back again. There's two water supplies in the town, they just keep taking water, taking water. It's gonna be a stop somewhere. Not only from recreational, fishery, or ponds themselves, it's, it's, it's gonna be another source. They should be looking into other sources somewhere else. We get any water, they're taking it all, that's, that'd be one of the different things. So we'll get you something that, I think, Brockton, Mission, or whatever, and find out if many meetings they have.
Well, I know both managers there real well, so I'd be happy to get those guys a call.
Yeah, I would, it was approachable.
And Rick LaFons and Adam.
And Dan Callahan is the Water Director. And I've spoken to him a number of times in the past about water and what they've been taking out for other water issues. And he's been responsive. He answers the phone, he answers the email. So I'll get you his phone number and his email address, so you can speak, go right to the source. I mean, he answers to Commissioners, but he's the guy that runs the day-to-day operations.
We go to meetings with Brockton, and, you know, the, from the county, by, for, the water, the D P W. come upon, everybody's over looking, you know, from Abington, you know, these, you know, these, I felt they could go down, they could, you know, it would be nice to call that. We're gonna have all sorts of, we can keep our funds, not to a high level, but they have, of this. All summer, we save water, through, we can, let the water, we can fall, we save it, save it, and they take it, so it just doesn't make sense.
We still have that issue of Brockton taking water and then selling it to somebody else. If you can, can't seem to get a handle on that. I don't know where that stands.
Well, the latest where the Brockton water stands, as we know it, is our state legislator and others, and Jim Coulter is one of the few that's been taking the lead. The last statement that he said when the Brockton Mayor, last published statement that I recall, he tried to get a meeting with the Brockton Mayor, and the Brockton Mayor blew, blew off a meeting abruptly, did not, did not show. So he said, Tom Coulter said, the state legislature gave them the right to take the water out of Silver Lake, the state legislature can take it away. And that's a pretty good segue to ask our state legislator, and he gets on the mic here.
It is. That is a good point.
All right. Hey? Evening, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
So I actually just left Tom Coulter. Literally, which. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
For long, it's my first time before you, as Selectman, congratulations again.
Thank you.
You guys, it's good to see you all. So I'll start with what Dan asked, and I'll dive into the budget update, and then I'm gonna take any questions that you guys might have. Bless you. So regarding the issue of water management, these are deep Brockton, this has been, and credit to Selectman Tribuco, but he's been on top of this since the beginning, since I first got elected, he's been, he's been on me to be on that, and I appreciate having that kind of support at the local level, so thank you. And Representative Coulter, to his credit, next door in Halifax and also Kingston, has been really the vocal leader of this, and I've been proud to stand with him and support his efforts. We've done a few different things. Number one, we do have a piece of legislation that we filed together, Representative Coulter filed, that I was co-sponsor of. We have been having some discussions with the D E P. They are in the process of going through a consent decree, which is being negotiated with Brockton. I don't know yet what the outcome of that will be, how favorable that will be to our position or not, but that is in the works. We've had some conference calls, Representative Coulter, myself, and the region, the thirty-five, D E P. coordinated around Lakeville. So that's one front we're working on. We did have earlier this summer, a walking tour of the area with some of the legislators from Brockton, and we had some pretty candid conversations, I would say. And Selectman Tribuco was correct, there was a meeting that was supposed to happen with the Mayor of Brockton, didn't happen. I don't want to get into personalizing, but we're still trying to press for that meeting, and I'm gonna try to be there as well to make our case. I think, you know, I, I mean, I think I understand their position. I don't agree with it, but I think I understand their position. You know, they feel that, from their point of view, switching to D Sal plant is gonna cost money, why would they do that when they can take water, you know, cost here? That doesn't make it right, in my view. That's the key issue. I think Representative Coulter, his long-term goal is, you know, whether we do the legislation or not, is to get Brockton to consider joining the N W R A., which is one potentially avenue to solve their woes, and hopefully it would be ours as well. So it hasn't been solved, Dan. It's not gonna be solved right away. It's a contentious issue, and there's two sides to this. But I can tell you that there's some strong feelings, and, you know, we're all united in terms of working together, our delegation, and Senator D C., as well, as you mentioned as well, to try to come to some resolution.
Brock?
Yes, sir.
I understand that the legislature gave Brockton the okay years and years ago to take water from Pembroke. I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with, all of a sudden, they feel that they have a right to take water that they don't need and sell it to somebody else. That's what I don't understand. I don't think that was the intent.
No, I don't think that was concentrated in the legislation either.
On anybody's idea, when they gave Brockton the okay.
I hundred percent agree, and it reminded me of another point I wanted to mention. A couple areas, where we have made some progress, last year's budget, and again, this year's budget, I'll mention that. We did get funding for the Central Ford County Water District Commission, which, in and of itself, that is actually progress. If you think about it, going back maybe three or four years ago, that body, to familiarize yourself, for those who may not be familiar with Dan, was created by the legislation which was passed, I believe, in nineteen sixty-six, but for a long time it was dormant. The Central Ford Water County District existed on paper, essentially, and it didn't really have active meetings. That was revived. It now has a very vibrant groove. There's three Commissioners, one from Brockton, two others. They post their meeting, they know some of you have been there, I've been to some of the meetings, I know Mr. Corn's been involved in that. So that is one thing that is positive. Communication has been much more active. I'm on the email chains, I see the emails back and forth between Commissioners in the city of Brockton, the Water Commissioner. Some of them are, you know, contentious, because there were some real disagreements about the management and who has the authority to open the sluice gates and getting them to that level of management. So there was funding in the budget last year, which they now have, and for, it's a good use. I think one of the things they're talking about doing is automating sluice gates, which would give a little bit more power to the Water District Commission. There's some money in the budget again this year, which will help, another fifty dollars. So that's at least more progress. Again, it's not, it's not the solution, but I wholeheartedly agree with Dan's line point.
New point I brought up to the Selectmen tonight, is also that we should be looking at the area, because the water level is so low, it's trying to fall right now, and it's, Brockton is still pumping. And water level is gone, gone down, way below, so, well, we, 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 to, to, I think, Sandy.
Not Silver Lake, you're talking about?
The, 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 out of pond, it's been a little issue, it's, you know, we could close that gate, and, 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 down, try to save water, but it's probably down, for half a feet, on the pond itself, so, that's not good, to try to save water, if they take, you know, and probably saving, for the errant, for people who live in lakes, people who do, who, 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 who.
That's a great, sorry, that's a great point, you know, you mentioned it, Bill. One of the issues we've had, you know, obviously, all of our South Shore towns are under water restrictions. Brockton only recently went under voluntary restrictions. So they really have, don't have a lot of incentive to conserve water, which is not what incentive should be, so that's another issue that we have with the whole water management systems. We all have incentives to conserve water, they really don't.
You know, the thing that, I think you promised you'd finish, also, we discussed in this, Brockton, in fact, they're diverting water during migration periods, and I don't think that, that should be after migration. Probably when they gave them that permit to do that, you know. Probably when they gave them that permit to do that years ago, say you can take water from, uh, from October first or whatever. Been through until May thirtieth or whatever. This is, uh, this is an important time of migration for fish. If we don't have the water, or they're taking water and not fixing their screens and people like that, sort of, which you don't fish. You don't get into the so, which has happened to a number of cases. We actually see them when we think we were, we were, but.
I think I was down there once, yeah.
One day, we lose hundreds of little fish to the rain at the end, and because all they had to do was open the gates and play their bill. And things like that need to be, really need to be looked into. Uh, we need to get the others. I'm just fully agreed that, that we, we grow water into so, like, uh, but not during migration period, we don't have fish in front of the river. That's, we're trying to do the best job we can to increase the amount of fish that's coming up in Pembroke's pond and getting that kind of stream. So if they're gonna be converting water to, you know, migration, and we don't have enough water to do that, that's, that's not good.
If you all think it would be helpful, I think it was probably about a year ago, we had Representative Coulter along with, I think, Paul Collis from the Central Palm County Water District Commission come in to, to a meeting. And had discussion either here or a smaller gathering, whatever you think would be helpful. But if that's something that would be helpful, we're gonna have to try to do so.
Actually, I go to meetings.
You go to those meetings anyway, so. Still talking about water, it's a good segue actually, um, to other water issues. Uh, so my purpose, my main purpose this evening was just to, uh, kinda get a, a budget update. We finished our, uh, budget cycle for the F Y, uh, for F Y sixteen, because of F Y seventeen. Um, I just wanna give a brief update. We have some, uh, some good news for the town. Uh, and again, I wanted to send regards from Senator DeMeceto. Sorry for being over the city with us, yeah, but, but, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with him. Do great things for the town. His first term, I don't have to tell the guys that, so kudos to him. Um, so, um, just, I guess before we get to the, the local stuff, wanted to just give a couple of broad views. This year's a bit of a challenging budget cycle. We had some, some revenue numbers that were fluctuating quite a bit. We made verbal news reports. Uh, and so initially we had a budget figure, revenue figure that we thought we're gonna be able to work with. And then we find out we could cut seven hundred and fifty million dollars out of that. So, um, it, it was a fairly austere budget. I believe, uh, in front of you can see the numbers, um, it's a thirty-nine point one billion dollar budget, which is an increase of just one point seven percent over, you know, before. So, you know, pretty, uh, pretty modest increase. But I think what, you know, we can be pleased with and be proud of is that even within that very conservative, uh, constraint, we made some key investments in areas I think are, that we all think are important. Substance abuse, education being one. Substance abuse, uh, local aid and education, uh, being a key one. One of the things I've talked about in the past is chapter, chapter seventy, uh, for pupil minimum expenditures, which we've increased to fifty-five dollars per pupil, which is a huge, um, win for suburban communities like ours. In the past, let's go to the weeds of the numbers, uh, for instance, last year, the budget was twenty-five dollars per pupil. So we've more than doubled, twenty-five to fifty-five dollars per pupil to me. Pembroke, it's literally a little, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars extra we would have gotten passed. That's very welcome news. And something frankly we've been pushing for, for a long time, because I think that, you know, everybody go to the school community meetings, they're, they're already, you know, if it's water here, it's, it's, it's chapter seventy over there. And, um, rightly so. And so this is something that we've all been trying to, uh, get raised for a number of years. So to see it increased twenty-five off of fifty-five is very welcome news, so. That was great, uh, news. We also saw an increase in the, um, formula, the formula grants for our councilman agent, our senior center. So we'll go from nine to ten dollars per senior, uh, of folks now. And every senior center and every other senior center across the state. Also, a number of areas, um, in terms of overrides, I know many of you, some of you have found that would be, um, about some of these overrides. I listed a number of ones that were of interest. One of the things that is something I wanted to mention, and is of interest of mine, is, is lyme disease. Because unfortunately, during the South Shore, we have a high incidence of lyme disease. And that's something many constituents here in Pembroke and elsewhere throughout the South Shore have reached out to me about. Because, um, some folks were able to get the shot and they're fine, back on their feet. Other people have long-term effects of lyme disease. In some cases, long-term antibiotic treatment is the one that's really, um, proving to help, helping these situations. For the longest time, people were not able to get insurance coverage for long-term antibiotics here. And so it's like they're spending, you know, thousands and even tens of thousands of dollars for them. So for the first time, uh, this year, I think I should be including outside section two, um, uh, to allow people who have long-term, long-term lung disease issues to qualify for long-term care, if their doctors recommend it, if their medical professional recommends it. So they can get insurance coverage. That'll save folks, uh, a lot of money. So that was a, I thought a big victory for something that affects us here on the South Shore. More locally, um, Senator DeMeceto and I working together again, um, some good news in terms of some earmarks for the town. One, some of you guys may already be, uh, updated on these, but, um, there's a hundred thousand dollars budget for Erwin Park. Some DeMeceto put into the, the senate budget, it was passed in the House. So that was, uh, was overrode, overwritten, excuse me, that was vetoed, but then the veto was overridden, so the money is in the budget. Same for fifty thousand dollars that I put in for, uh, public safety improvements during the town. Again, that was a veto, but overridden, so that money is now in the budget. There were some funds made available for, called Interface, Project Interface, which is a mental health referral service, which helps people who have, um, mental health needs try to connect with mental health professionals. One of the aspects we see with the whole opioid issue is that for some folks, it's a mental health issue. Getting the help that they, um, need to be part of that. So this is one way to try to connect the dots and get treated for folks who need it. So Project Interface, uh, will include Pembroke. Then there's some also funding for, um, Central Palm County Water District, which I mentioned already, which obviously benefits Pembroke and Hanson in our region. And then, um, funds for triple E, uh, West Nile virus, which we do every year, uh, to try to do spraying. So those are some of the highlights. The, um, the school A thing, uh, I mentioned already. If there's any particular needs or questions or areas that you're interested in, I'd be happy to talk. Ed Thorne and I have already kinda talked more times than I can think of the last couple of weeks about various things. So if he's on top of stuff, but if there's anything in particular that you're interested in, I would like to bring it to us. And everything I just mentioned, um, is in this table. Well?
Good to see you, Representative.
Yes.
To go back to water for a minute.
Yes, okay.
Dan, I think, uh, Representative Coulter was saying, you know, we gave Brockton the right to the water, we can take it away. Is that realistic?
So.
If you do the votes in the House, you still have to do that.
The problem is, so Representative Coulter filed a bill that I'm a co-sponsor of. And the problem is gonna be just getting enough support for that because, um, you know, for the population, more people are there. So, um, that's gonna be in a hill fight, I think, to try to get that to happen. And I think, um.
This, excuse me, Josh, is that to repeal the nineteen sixty-four legislation?
And I think, you know, I hope, I'm, I am hopeful that we can, you know, there's gotta be, there's gotta be a compromise. Brockton has a D S O plant, you know, the N W R A would be an option. We're not saying you can't use the water at all, we're just saying we want you to use it responsibly.
Well, the D S O plant did spend between two and six million dollars, I believe, um, you know, not to use facility.
Right, like one of those not raising pigs things you say in the federal budget, right?
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Chairman of the Fund, that nineteen sixty-four legislation allows Brockton to sell water to Whitman. Correct?
I definitely check that.
Okay.
Because I'm driving.
Yeah, so that affects the town of Whitman as well. So.
No, I'm just saying, uh, I don't, I don't say that.
It does include it.
Yeah. The whole thing about all this is, um, when they made this back in nineteen sixty-four, um, there was, there was a lot of water.
Sure.
You know, there was water everywhere. Pembroke's got a lot, a lot of ponds and.
And what was the population of the town?
And the population.
Yeah, it's, it's very different times.
Just to do a quick one thing, the, the legislation was passed in eighteen ninety-nine. The sixty-five law was passed because it was a severe drought. So they had to amend the eighteen ninety-nine law. But I'll pull that over to you. I have a copy of the original.
So it's, uh, and even, even as far as the fisheries and things like that go, it's, um, it's something that, it was so abundant way back then, that they didn't think about, um, what's, what's happening here today. I think all of the needs we looked at. Vision for new fisheries is very hard to work with us, and, um, they're kinda deep in Brockton. My old grad chase has got a bunch of different, um, projects. We want some of them around here, and we want some of them down in the Gulf of British, or some of the other places that, um, that, that market water on some lake, you know. I think it's something that really needs to study. And one of the things we asked the, and one of the meetings we asked, um, the, um, Central Palm County, a lot of different commissioners, was that we need to have a date on pond, turn of pond, we, we need to have a lot. And we don't know that. Brockton knows that because they have a little pond inside their building, the same body that's up here. We take it, we can take it down to this point. We don't know that, though. We, we have no way of, you know, how much water they take and when they take it. Although we give you statistics if you ask them, because we don't know if that is correct, um, when that date was made, who made it, who gave them that file. Whereas today's, um, we asked if they can include that in the grant, that money to go out for the grant, they can have to engineer.
Last year?
Yeah, come in and say, this, this is what the pond level should be at all times. And, uh, should it go below a certain level, we should save this level. So if we can find all of that, I would keep it there, and, and that should affect. Brockton taking water, it should affect having the water taken, because if you're up in the aquifer, they just keep taking it. That's already what they're, that's already what's, it's all from this now, so. I mean, between all of them, there's a little trickle-down, lots of disruption. And it just does not, a lot of it, you know, just passed, I believe, some of the stories, but they hope to grow on range. We may not have that back now, especially on the property of, we've had so much, uh, fish, uh, from up this year. Originally, three or four years ago, twenty to thirty thousand fish last year, it was a hundred and twenty, up to thousands. This year, it was two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. They took the counter one, and after the counter was taken out, it was thousands more that came out. So we had a really good year, and then to lose all of that and not be able to get a down stream, create tragedy, so. We also brought to your attention that we're thinking of, um, and trying to plan for, uh, for us pond to be drenched.
Right, we, we had a discussion about that the other day.
And we're doing, um, we're gonna be doing that type of water. So we're gonna be back there getting out the water, and, you know, so we're gonna need even more water to do that. So it's, um, something I don't think is gonna be returning back into pond quickly, as some people might think. So we ask the, keep all that water, ask to come out of all, like, slides and stuff, we're just gonna take it out of it. So just, you know, I think in the next fifteen years, we'll get all the water that we need. And those that did run, we have something we have to be looking at.
We had a, uh, not maybe, like, Ed already updated you guys. We had a meeting last week with, um, Representative, Senator Moore's office, uh, our region. It's a town that's, we're, we asked a couple of other regional meeting. And just kinda talked about, you know, some of the bigger issues for everybody, for Pembroke and Hanson, and that was, I was like, I'm gonna go on, edit that, I might have that right away. And, you know, I think that Senator, uh, Senator Staff had some ideas about potentially, you know, putting sort of, um, obviously it's very, I think, right. There is some funding in a bond deal, which passed two years ago. Bond deals, it's, uh, a few others, but the government, uh, fifty million dollars. So I, I get the message, water. Uh, if you, if you'd like, uh, I'd be happy to, we could try to schedule a follow-up for, you know, if, if we, uh, if we, uh, if we're meeting a lot of, just, we're doing a subgroup to talk about that. Whatever your board's preferences, you know, to, literally just left Representative Coulter to rush over here. So I, I gotta be happy to, I'm sure he'd be happy to, um, represent his own community, but I'm sure he'd be happy to, he's very passionate about this. I'm sure he'd be happy to come and chat with you guys.
This might also be a, might also be a good thing, we can go again, put on the town, let's say.
Sure.
I have a question, Josh.
Okay, about water?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay.
As you know, we, we have approval to construct a sidewalk at Pomelo Off Street, towards my, I'm hearing it. The issue we have with moving forward with this approved project is length of time that we can pay for this.
Oh, okay.
I understanding it's a five-year period is out.
It's available, we have.
And it's a special act, I understand.
Right.
Can you, can you explain that to me, what the special act, what is this?
Okay, so it's a special act of the legislature, so it's, it's basically a home rule petition that, that generated from the town, that I filed at the State House on your behalf, Senator DeMeceto and I, uh, to, uh, to. That one in particular, because Ed, you know, he's always on the ball, he just asked me about this the other day, that's why I know. Um, it's, it passed, uh, the first step, it's in the House Third Reading, which is, um, before y'all look along. Basically, the bill, that is passed, uh, on the floor, goes to a committee, uh, in the state's, went to the municipalities committee, had a hearing. It was reported favorably from the hearing in the committee, giving basically, putting the funds up. Then it goes to House Third Reading, which is, um, every bill goes through House Third Reading, it's sort of like a traffic management thing where they review all the bills, make sure that they, um, you know, some, literally like, you know, typos and, you know, the right master of laws referred to, and there's not a conflict with another state law, all that kind of stuff. And that can, can be, um, somewhat likely, but, uh, if this bill's moving along, so.
So what is the process?
So it's a, it's a House Third Reading.
Going through that.
Then it will go to the Senate, and the process will repeat. And, um, it doesn't have to go through a hearing, because it's already had one, we've got joint committees, so we have one hearing for both branches. Goes to the House, goes to the Senate, goes to the government. We've already, uh, we did a home rule bill in Dux, excuse me, Pembroke already, uh, last, uh, last year. So it's not a, it's not a, probably have a couple of home rule bills, and Duxbury wanted to hand some. And though, just to, in case folks get confused, uh, we did formally end our sessions July thirty-first, when we have to see what news. Uh, that's ending formal sessions. We still have informal sessions throughout the year, uh, at which point, uh, bills of a non-funcerous nature, the home rule bill, if it's that way, uh, is passing forty times. Um, it can still pass in those, uh, sessions, so this is, this is.
Okay. Josh, is, is there any talk or movement on reviewing, analyzing, and revising, uh, the chapter seventy formula?
Sure. Uh, yes, a lot. Um, so two years ago, in the budget, we, uh, put language into, had a permission to reanalysis of chapter seventy formula. Hadn't been done in, I believe, seven or eight years, so it's time to do it again. Uh, they did that. I know, I believe former superintendent Packett, uh, offered testimony to that commission. I think, um, I, during my talk to the school unit, we talked about it, you know, there's a dialogue there. They made, so they made their report, they made some recommendations. Obviously, a big part of it is, I can be surprised, just funding. The size of the pie is, you know, the main issue. But we, we'll, we can fight about how it gets digged up. But unless the pie gets bigger, it's gonna be, you know, this town versus that time kind of debate. So there's been a lot of discussion. I think, um, it's, it's not resolved. Uh, this year, we saw actually a really welcome step because in the past, my frustration, probably your frustration, is that, you know, when you see these increases in local aid, it tripled down to, to our towns, you know, it's fairly modest. We saw very small increases in local aid, excuse me, in, uh, chapter seventy, you know, in the past few years, because the way the formula is, Pembroke's student population is actually being, you know, flat or even declining in some ways. And this is the same, every three, all three of my towns are the same road traffic, um, same issues with, with chapter seventy formula. And so how do you resolve that? Well, short of just throwing open the whole formula and starting from scratch, which would be its own, you know, challenge, the, the minimum per pupil expenditure is the key.